Good evening and welcome to the May 2024 Meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for alternate participation in order to accommodate all citizens. Any written comments sent to staff or forwarded to the commission directly. At this time, I'd like to introduce our staff. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. Michael Garner, City Engineer. Zach Pons, Director of Planning. Haley Webb, Development Review Coordinator. And Lily McIntyre, Special Projects Coordinator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all who were appointed by the mayor for staggered terms with the exception of the City Council Representative, who was appointed by the City Council. I ask the commission members to introduce themselves, that occupation starting with Hornsby.
Ann Hornsby, Attorney.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
Vince Dooley, Design Coordinator, UA.
Dana Prince, Attorney.
John Smith, Deputy Director of Environmental Services.
Tim Harrison, General Contract. Bill Wright, Business Owner. There are sign up sheets outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. Procedures, tonight the commission will take up items in the order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property such as annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involved in the same property. After the staff presentation, we'll then call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remark, we'll then call upon any party in order of sign up or otherwise who desires to support the petition. And thereafter, we'll call in order of those who are opposed to petition. When in short term for comment, please introduce yourself stating your name and address for the record, address directed to the commission and any remarks. Any written comments have been included to the record. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to the objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your time limit. Once the commission members are satisfied, they will see to all relevant information, we'll then call to close the further discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comment should be made at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually are video recorded through the conference application. Again, please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction. In all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and its planning jurisdiction, and as to amendments, planned unit developments, and located outside the city limits, this commission serves as the final authority. As to matters pertaining to historic buffer zone construction, our decisions are subject to appeal to the City Council. As to all remaining agenda matters including original zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments within the city, and street vacation, this commission serves as a recommending by to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation we presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approval requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. At this time, I would ask to any members of the commission to have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters before us tonight. If so, please state the case for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining from AN-09-24.
Any other members? Having heard none, I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Okay. There is a slight change to the agenda. The following agenda items have been modified. Other business will be moved from number eight on the agenda to number four on the agenda, directly following the cases requesting to withdraw. Do I hear a motion when the commission to second, a motion to second that request?
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. With that, we'll begin with approval of the minutes. As the Planning and Zoning Commission has received the synopsis of the April 2024 meeting, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections.
Motion.
All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. With that, we'll begin. Staff?
Good eve, good evening, Commission. Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me? Oh, too much. We have one item on the consent agenda this evening, S-3524, 27th Street Townhomes. No one has signed up to speak for or against, except for the petitioner. They signed up in favor of their application, so I think we can allow this to go forward.
All right. Mission before us, we have one item on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, we do have two cases requesting to withdraw. We did have two appeals pursuant to Rule 13 that were published. However, the applicant has come forward and requested to withdraw those appeals, so we'll let them come before you.
Commission, I'm Robert Martin with Duncan Kocher Associates. The developer has decided to withdraw this application. They're gonna continue to revise their application package and wait the six-month wait period and be ready to submit again in November.
Anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this appeal request? Haven't heard none? Is that somebody trying to speak up? All right, Commission, we have a withdrawal request with the appeal on pursuant to Rule 13 for P-0224 and PS-3324 Lose Landing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, I'm gonna start us off with some other business tonight, so this was again moved at the beginning of the meeting. This is a framework update real quick, so as y'all know, we're going through this zoning text discussion and we're starting to kinda get to that point where we're really wrapping up, and so we're gonna start bringing you guys some kinda key zoning text-related items at the beginning of some of these meetings to go over. So this one is related to the sign ordinance, specifically related to interstate signs. So these proposed changes, two proposed changes here. So for the maximum height, the max height of a freestanding sign on lots of budding I-2059 and 359 south of I-2059 shall be 65 feet. So to clarify that point, currently, our regulations go to I-20, so it stops right here. We are proposing to extend that down to the full bit of 359, which ends at Skyland. So that means that all of these would then come into, come into play with the interstate sign piece where they can go up to 65 feet, which we've seen variances for that approved in the past due to their proximity to the interstate. So there's that. Another piece of this one is, this is measured from the grade of the interstate with a maximum structure height of 100 feet. So of course, again, using this example, Lowe's down here is clearly a lot lower than the interstate at that location, so to measure from grade would be pretty crazy. So we're gonna, you know, you can measure from grade, you know, over here would be fine, but a maximum of 100 feet, but up to 65 feet if, you know, up to 65 feet if you're measuring at grade, but you can go to a maximum of 100 feet in this situation over here with Lowe's, if that makes sense. So there is that. And then the second proposed change that we have is location, so we're adding this. A development is adjacent to a locally classified road with no privately owned property between the right of way and the local street. So we are adding this, so this is the example that we're using, so of course, here's Cracker Barrel in this area. There's a, there was a variance request for this property here to allow for a sign to meet the interstate regulations, and the reason it had to go to ZBA was because of Doris Payt Drive, this locally, local street here, which clearly, I think, all of us in this room can see that, you know, it would be appropriate for all of these to have the similar, similar regulations as this pilot, you know? And so what we are proposing is that if there's no private property in between where this locally designated road and the interstate is, you would be able to, to, you know, go up to that 65 feet measured at the, at the grade. So for instance, if, if this property here wanted to have one, they wouldn't be able to because you've got private property in between, but this property would be able Trying to give you another example maybe, but that's pretty much the gist of it. So we're making those two changes, just we've seen through the zoning board of adjustment, these kind of variances being requested that do seem appropriate, and they've been approved through the zoning board of adjustment to allow higher signs. That's really all I've got for the framework update. We'll go on to the other business, which is Commons North.
All right, second item under other business, Commons North LLC requests an extension for the previously approved planned unit development. This is North River Commons, a five-story mixed-use building. There's about 17,000 square feet of ground floor commercial, 3,500 square feet of amenity space, and one, two, and three-bedroom apartment units consisting of 390 bedrooms. This is on 4.6 acres at 1750 Commons North Loop in Council District 3. Here's the vicinity map showing where we are. The property is zoned BN. We're near Watermelon Road, Rice Mine Road, right off of Commons North Loop. Aerial image. And again, this is, I believe, the third time you all have heard this planned unit development. So quickly going through the spiel, 17,000 square feet, that ground floor will be all commercial with residential above 95 one-bedroom units, 95 two-bedroom, and 35 three-bedroom. Again, this is just some more imagery of the site. Site plan, here we go. Getting into the summaries, providing 462 spaces of parking. Zooming in a little, the parking is internal, have a proposed stage with a jumbo TV, fire apparatus. Getting into the floors, this will be that ground floor and going up five stories in total. Got a golf simulator on the third floor. And looking at those unit layouts. And here are some renderings of what that could and would look like. Any questions for staff on this?
Nothing has changed since we saw this from the very first time, correct?
Nothing has changed since this was here a year ago. I would like to say that has been the same since the beginning.
Was that the second extension? We saw it a year ago, correct?
That's right.
This will be the second extension.
Right, okay.
So, we'll let the applicant come.
Fisher?
Andy Turner, 1810, Commons North Drive, Suite 1, Tuscaloosa, Alabama 35406. Appreciate y'all looking at this again. We are asking for another extension on this project. We do still have every intention of doing the project. Shortly after this was approved, if you'll remember, interest rates went crazy, so we kinda put this on the back burner a little bit. Our team, my team is really focused on our North River project, getting the hotel and condos started, well, they're both started, just continuing with those right now. Robert Buckalter is also one of our partners in this, and he's starting to take the lead on hopefully getting this going in the coming year.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay, having heard none. Mission before us, we have an extension request on P-0322, North River Commons. Do you have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
All right, Commission, we have one case carried over from last month. That is S-2724 Sullivan Estates, which is now Hatch Estates. This is consisting of five lots on approximately nine acres located at and around 1705 Bear Creek Road East. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. We are in Taylor Wood Estates area, east of Bobby Miller Center. Here's an aerial overview of the lot, and they're proposing to go from one lot to five. Here's that plat with contours and without. And the variance requests are for half-street improvements, capped sewer, and lot configuration. Last month, they were working out the right-of-way situation where that gravel road exists on the western side, and I believe they've come to a resolution.
Engineering on the variance request?
We're okay with those requests.
Any questions for staff? Petitioner?
Kevin Hinkle, Montgomery Hinkle, Inc., Professional Land Surveyors, 203 Harbor Road East. We were at the request of legal and the council, went back and did a deed research. Like the Dockery family acquired that land in around 1916, and around 1954 was the first documents that we found that mentioned the roadway, and they left an 18-foot strip through there that would still, from my deed research, would still belong to the heirs of the Dockeries. The deed for our property that we are subdividing went to a Dockery before it went to a Hatch, and their deed said to the east edge of an 18-foot road. Didn't cross over it, didn't claim access, didn't find any deeds that claimed usage or access for anybody on the road other than it exists. We have no plans to use that road other than that corner lot that has always had a driveway access at that point. That's where we stand.
Engineering, legal, this was a tricky one last month. Do you have any input or just to clarify what we were hearing from last month?
I think lot one definitely needs something in writing.
In writing?
For an easement standpoint.
I guess if we can find an original Dockery heir, we might be able to acquire that because that would be the ownership of that road. Because no other deed claims any ownership to the road unless you're the original heirs to the Dockeries. Or they could realign their driveway to not use that road. I see some of the family members are here.
Well, let's, let's, okay, we'll call them up here in a moment. Hang tight.
Kevin, can you take a, take your pointer and clarify? The, there's a property owner to the west of this 18-foot strip, which I believe you're showing their property boundary by deed as a dashed line. And then the 18-foot strip, you've got drawn the, the road within it, so maybe clarify for the commission that there's a, those landowners west of that 18-foot strip, they don't have a deeded right to that 18-foot road, do they? Not, not according to the way their deeds are written. Their deeds written, they go a distance, and they go to the west edge of the road. Their deeds claim to the west edge of it. The deeds all the way to the south, down to the half a mile line where the Dockeries line was. That deed, the first time it mentioned the road that we found was in 1954, and it split off some of the pieces to the Dockeries. One went to the west edge of the road of an 18-foot road, the other went to the east edge of an 18-foot road. Therefore, it would remain that that would be part of the original Dockery land, and it actually went to the north side of Bear Creek Road, and they sold off the property to the north side of Bear Creek Road early.
Since Lot 1 has frontage and could have a driveway, I think you could just put a note on the flat that Lot 1 is not claiming easement.
Yes.
I approve it.
The current road is not in use, as I, as I understand from previous, previous meeting, is that correct? Or is it, is, is that, is there a gravel road on that 18-foot right of way?
Oh, yes, sir. Goes straight for half a mile.
And is it in use? Okay, and so I assume that the landowners south of this property have use of it, correct?
They use it, but their deeds all say go to the east side of it, the right side of it, so our deed says the same.
I have no idea what you told me the last 10 minutes. I can't follow what you're saying. I'm trying to figure out what, what's going on here.
Well, Tuscaloosa County Tax Assessor Site listed it as a road.
Right.
That was the only reason we addressed it as a road. Then, at the request of Mr. Woodson, we went and did deed research, back as far as I could track it, and went through the tax assessor's maps. Tuscaloosa County Tax Assessor's maps in 1972 did not show that a road existed there. In 1973, they began showing a road existing there, but it was only because they upgraded their maps. The maps at that time were mostly hand-drawn, and they left the 18-foot gap. I would assume that over the course of time, the tax assessor says, there's a gap here, nobody claims it, and they started labeling it as a road, and it appears on the tax assessor's map as a right-of-way, and that's an error. We've corrected that error by we only go to the east side of the road.
But currently, it's in use, so it's a drive right-of-way, correct?
Yes, for everybody except us. Other than the gentleman on the corner who's had a mobile home there and immediately turns off Bear Creek Road into that spot.
So what are you asking for here? You asking for the access right-of-way? The use?
No, sir. We are asking for there to be five lots around the existing structures to settle an estate for the family. So we blocked out five lots, did include or set up.
But you're gonna need access off of it for Lot 1, correct?
Uh, they have road frontage, so we will, they will have to adjust it. To not even use the road. Since y'all don't want them to use the road, we won't let them use the road, I assume. In my opinion, the way he's presenting this plat now, it, it, the roadway does not affect this subdivision approval that's before you. That Lot 1 does have public road frontage, so it has a means to access. The, the map is not including any of the, the 18-foot strip as any part of access to these five lots. I, I think it, I think he's satisfied what, what our concerns were.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? Do you, I mean, when you look at this plat, the way you've drawn the driveways coming off of whatever the gravel road's name is, if I looked at it, unless there's something on the plat, I would assume that I could get access from the driveways that are existing. Can we make a note on the plat that says any access to Lot 1 will be off Bear Creek Road? I mean, I, I think, I think it would be better to put somebody on notice that that's not gonna be available to them.
Yes, that's where I said.
I mean, I, I, that, that's just.
That was my recommendation.
I'm just thinking about a potential buyer. I know right now you're just trying to settle an estate, but at some point, some of these lots may get sold, and when somebody looks at that plat, I think it would be reasonable for them to assume that they're gonna have access off that gravel road.
Yes, my recommendation was that Lot 1 not have access from that road, but they have access from the public drive.
Does Lot 1 not have access now?
Well, I mean, those, those are the existing driveways that exist. That's the reason they're shown like they are. We didn't create new driveways, we just encompass what already exists there, that he's a, a family heir that lives in that mobile home who's been accessing that spot for many years. But if he needs to change his driveway, he just needs to change his driveway.
But don't you need to draw that on the plat?
Well, I didn't assume that we needed it, but now that I see that we do, that we're gonna. Since that's not a public way, I think this is a property rights issue at best between whoever owns Lot 1 and that 18-foot strip. There could be a legal challenge that there's been a prescriptive right that's generated because that gravel drive has accessed Lot 1 for all these years. I, I'm, I would be comfortable with him recording the plat without anything on it.
Without anything on it?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Was there an issue about accessing Lot 3 from that road later on? Was that not part of the?
That was what the issue was. There was never an issue with Lot 1, it was only with Lot 3, and that was because it listed the, the road as a road when it's not really, it's an 18-foot strip property that by all accounts would be deeded to the heirs of the Dockeries who originally owned it, because it never got deeded anyone else.
So, Jimbo, Jimbo, will you, based off what Mike said, will you have any issues with, if we don't approve it with?
No, I think, I think it's ending up, if ever was a battle, it's a private battle, and he, Lot 1 has independent means of access to the property.
Any more questions for petitioner? I'm sure we got a few people signed up. We have the sheet, okay? Okay, no one has signed up to speak for or against? If you'd like to come forward, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There was Erin Dixon.
Scott McCool, I live at 1625. My mother is the original Dockery heir that owned all of that strip that goes east, and then, like I say, it's subsequently been broken up to different, uh, family members, I guess you'd say. Like I say, I own several lots down through there, but that road was always an easement, non-deeded easement to everybody on this side of the road that don't have county road access, and the rest of me and my cousins that own property further down the road that go behind this estate. Now, we, I'm on the corner across from the trailer Lot 1. My cousin Andy lives in that trailer. We don't have a problem with him coming on and off that road, because as soon as you turn off the road, he turns into his drive. He don't use that road. He don't do the maintenance on it like me and Mr. Lane do. We're the only ones that do maintenance on that entire road. So our main thing was that whoever had Lot 3 come in and out and make, and turned it into their new access to there and put trailers or whatever else on there, and not agreed to maintain the road, because it's not a county road. It's a family road. So we wanna make sure that it's not abused and the maintenance is took care of. So if they're not gonna, if they're gonna give up right-of-way of use of that road because they have county right-of-way, that's the reason. That entire lot from the family has always used the county road, and they've never had any part of that lane, and it's always been understood in the family that they've got right-of-way. They got the choice piece of the property. Everybody else has got property that was not county road access. So that lane was dedicated to us and us only use. So that's, that's what we're trying to keep it the same, instead of becoming some kind of new lane in and out to whatever the property winds up to be, if for some reason we can't purchase the property during all this go-around.
All right. Anything else?
So any, I mean, he was asking about access to Lot 1, whatever, you know, there's no problem with him coming on and off that. That's the only lot that is using the road now. We don't have a problem with that, you know, because he's right there at it. He's been using it for years, so like you say.
If I understand you correctly, you're saying that league, the, your, your heirs, your Dock, the Dockery heirs own that piece of property, so are you the, are you the last?
I'm the Dockery heir as of now. My mother's the original Dockery heir. She's done left at all. I mean, she has a lot of estate.
So it's your property? Is that 18-foot strip yours?
Yeah. Right there on the corner. I own the second, third one down, the lane's on it. I own, on, down on the very end, there's another five acres on down through there at the very end. I own, own, down on the very end, there's another five acres on down through there at the very end of the road.
So whoever the landowner of Lot Three ends up being, uh, they need permission from you to access that because it's your property?
Correct.
Then that's for you.
It'll maybe work with anybody, but you know, as long as everybody agrees what's gonna come on and off and happen with that road.
That doesn't happen at this meeting, though.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
It, it, it happens between you and whoever ends up owning Lot Three.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, because we're gonna get it. Anyone else care to speak for or against, um, this petition?
I need verification. My name is Pat Lane. My husband is Joe. We own the, uh, first, third lot there on the left. What did you just say? That it would have to be left up to what?
So that's not a public road. It is owned by an individual. Someone owns that land that's on the eighteen-foot strip, and he claims that it's him or his heirs. So if anybody's gonna access that, they're getting on somebody else's property. They've gotta get their permission to do it. It's not a public right to cross someone else's property.
Okay, that's why I just wanted-
Sir, we can't hear you for the record, so. You, you, did you get your question answered, ma'am?
Yes, we did.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else care to speak for or against this petition request? I think we've got, uh, it's pretty discussed again, right?
Very much.
All right. All right, Commission. Of course, we have S twenty-seven twenty-four, Sullivan Estates with three variance requests. Engineering has no issues with. Uh, anything legally you wanna put in the?
No.
Okay, fair enough. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
It's hard for me?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, moving into our cases to be heard for the evening, we'll start with companion case A consisting of an annexation and rezoning. We'll start with the annexation, which is AN eleven twenty-four. This is to annex approximately zero point three acres located at four seven three zero Harkey Lane. Here's the vicinity map. We are off of Old Colony Road. And here is the existing city limit boundaries, so it is completely surrounded by city limits. Requesting to bring in that little red triangle. And here's an aerial overview. They're requesting to annex into city limits for access to city sewer. And this has been identified as our primary expansion area. And there were no issues with other departments, other than E S D services will not be provided to this area. Moving into the rezoning, W J M Investments LLC, this is for Z O six twenty-four. They're petitioning to rezone approximately one point three acres located at forty-seven thirty Harkey Lane from R one to B N. This is in Council District Three. Again, we're in that same area, still looking at that triangle piece, um, but with some additional land surrounding it. Requesting to rezone from R one to B N. And here's an aerial overview of the lots. Here's the site. There's an existing single-family home on the property today. And this is to accommodate a neighborhood commercial development. Um, looking at the site plan, the intent for the land use is for a self-storage facility. Here's a site plan showing what that could look like, accessing from Harkey Lane, not accessing off of Old Colony Road. And here are some renderings of what that could look like as well. Getting into the land use and what framework classified these properties, it's identified as corridor commercial, and it is also identified as G C, general commercial. We have had that special called framework meeting for this area. So the zoning request itself to go from R one to B N does conform to the plan. We have identified this as commercial use, however, um, or commercial zoning. However, the intended use does not conform to the plan. In general commercial, um, their future zone, self-storage facilities are not allowed. It would need to be a use variance. Um, and in B N, self-storage facilities are only permitted as a special exception. So the path to get this use approved would be, um, if rezone to B N, they would need to go to the zoning board of adjustment and request that special exception with current zoning. And if this property were G C with our future zone, that would then be the use variance route. And here's a future land use character map. Um, the entire Harkey Lane is identified as commercial. And here are those permitted use tables. So these are the allowed by right. Continuing on with permitted. And our special exception uses. And this is from our current zoning code today. Any questions for city staff?
The requirement to go to Z B A with the applicant, does applicant have to come before us before they go to Z B A? If it's not zoned, or can they go Z B A for, or?
They would not come before you before going to Z B A, so they're requesting the annexation and zoning to B N. And then they would next go to city council to get approval on the annexation and rezoning. If successful and the property was brought in and all of it were rezoned to B N, they would then go to the zoning board of adjustment and request the special exception use.
But they could by right go to Z B A first, correct?
They could not since the property is not all zoned, uh, B N today.
Any other questions for staff? Petitioner?
Robert Martin with Duncan Coker Associates. Um, as Haley said, this is a rezoning to B N to match the remainder of the Harkey property along Harkey Lane. Um, this property originally was not zoned B N because of the residence that's on that site. Um, it was remained R one and in the county, um, so we're just asking to go to, go to B N to match the remainder of that property. Um, as Haley said, we, we would go to Z B A for a special exception, um, for this climate-controlled self-storage facility.
Show the overhead map again, please. Looking down at what's around it. Show the street view, if you don't mind, as well. Is that the only street view of Harkey Lane that we have? Is that another office behind those trees over there that's similar? Building style?
I believe it's a pediatrician's office.
Yes, a doctor's office.
I think one of the things that we're kinda struggling with is it doesn't, doesn't conform what is for that area. And requiring a special exception, I think that's one of the things this body's, there we go.
I mean, I, it conforms with the zoning surrounding it.
I mean, it, it, if we're going- Property should be B N. I don't think anybody's questioning that, but I think it's the use that everybody's kinda-
The developers here tonight, they, they've got a pretty extensive list of quick-service restaurant clients that they took a poll from and tried to get somebody in, into that property. Um, believe it or not, the concern was not enough traffic counts along Old Colony to support a quick-service restaurant. All the restaurants wanted to have frontage along the Rose Mine portion of that intersection. So that's kinda how we ended up at this point.
Isn't there a quick-serve restaurant right there in McDonald's? Is that what you classify as a quick-serve restaurant sometime? Is that what you classify as a, what do you classify as a quick-serve restaurant?
A drive-through type restaurant.
McDonald's is right adjacent.
Yeah, they got access from Rose Mine.
I'm, I'm kinda agreeing with Chairman. I mean, from, from our standpoint, we feel like this is a B N-type zoning, but the, it, it, not being allowed by right, but through special exemption is one issue, and not meeting framework is the other issue, and not, in my opinion, not being in keeping with what it's adjacent to from a use purpose with two offices back there. Given the fact that you postponed today a, another very nice residential neighborhood that will be adjacent to this, correct?
That's correct.
So that's gonna be looking on the backside of a very tall, apparently a four-story building that looks like some of it's underground? With retaining walls or something?
Well, the, the front portion of it'll be three stories above ground and the back portion will be four.
So yes.
What's the, uh, show the elevation again of the, that's, that's the Old Colony side, correct? I'm seeing that correctly?
No, that'll, that'll, yes, the Old Colony, which the back portion backs up to the stock property. That'll be the frontage along Harkey Lane.
Anyone sign up?
No.
Let me ask, no one has signed up to speak for or against? Would anyone in the audience care to speak for or against this petition request? Whether it be the annexation or the, uh, rezoning? Okay, having heard none. Commissioner will talk amongst herself now. You know, I, I think that obviously we wanna get the property, the parcel into the city, and it comes in as R one. I think the B N request is appropriate. A lot of times we do ask for specifics. I think there's been conversation about how there might be a higher and better use. It's more of a, uh, better tax generating revenue opportunity out there. And, uh, again, with, with not being part of the framework going forward and needing a special exception, it just gives me a little pause as to, you know, what the staff and this body's been trying to do in this, in all areas of Tuscaloosa. So that's kinda what I'm struggling with a little bit. I mean, I, I know everybody screams and yells property rights and they do have the right to be in zoning, but again, the, the use is what's kinda hanging out there.
So are you saying, are you saying if you had a, a downscale use, i.e. doctor's office or something different, that would be, give you better?
It was currently there, and then like Mr. Harrison said, I mean, there's a large neighborhood that's on the horizon.
Right.
Are they gonna wanna look at?
My question would be what, what elevation is that neighborhood? You know, if it's on the other side of it's, are you gonna see all of that on the backside, or you're just gonna see a portion of that based off the elevation difference? Just a thought. I mean, I don't know that, but that's something. You know, because looking at this, you know, it looks tall on that backside, but it, between vegetation and grade changes, it may not be that tall. Just a thought, just running out.
Bring back up the picture of the current businesses that are there. At that one street view.
Yeah, trees and all this stuff.
I mean, so you're gonna have... Those are all single-story. You gonna drop a four-story warehouse right there?
I guess, I guess I'm not clear about exactly what our role is in, in the use issue. I mean, if they're gonna have to have a variance for that, um-
Special exception.
Are we, are we saying that it's okay for them to put the storage unit? Or are we simply saying that, um, that they can have other B N uses?
Well, we know the B N uses that are, don't require a special exception.
Right.
And they're gonna have to go before-
Z B A.
To get that special exception. At that point, it's, you know, it's by right at that point if they get that.
When it's zoned and recommended for rezoning, it's perfectly appropriate for you to consider the proposed use.
To, to rezone it from?
Right.
Yeah.
As well as other proposed uses, as well as other uses in the B N zoning district, because once it's B N, it's, it's B N.
You know, there's, each month something comes before us and we rezonate, either apartments or business or whatever. And I know the city struggles because I've heard the mayor say time and time again, there's only so many lots that can produce revenue for the city, and this looks like a prime lot. And we're taking it away and putting up, I don't think fits up there, a storage facility up in, around all those nice businesses and apartments and everything. And the housing thing that's fixing to come next to it in the future and the towns and the golf course and everything. It's, it's just, to me, it's like a square peg in a round hole.
Um, I have a question, and it's probably superfluous, but I, I know about the criterias for a variance and how hard it is to get one because you have to show a hardship. But a special exception, are there criteria that the Z B A has to look at? Are there, is there a wide latitude of, you know?
Yes, so, yeah, good question. So a variance would mean that you'd have to approve a hardship. Um, that can't be financial in nature. So for instance, I can't use this property for anything else other than what I'm proposing type. Um, a special exception is something where you, we've identified as a city that it could be appropriate in certain situations, and there's criteria that you, that the zoning board of adjustment would then look at. And there's discretionary and primary criteria, primary being, you know, hey, this, this needs to check all these boxes in order for us to even think about approving this. And then discretionary being, um, you know, say hypothetically, it doesn't meet one of these discretionary criteria, it still could maybe be appropriate based off of, you know, the nature of the character of the district, et cetera, so. With specifically self-storage facilities, there's two discretionary criteria that they're gonna look at, that the zoning board of adjustment will look at.
So, so it's pretty strenuous, pretty strenuous then.
So discretionary being, you know, they, they don't have to meet those standards necessarily for Z B A to approve that.
I, I guess my question, Commissioner, is there anything in the B N that's like this that would not be a good fit? You know, I know if we- By right.
Pull back up the list.
You know, is it, is it anything in B N that would be akin to this or just this?
Uh, yeah, so, you know, we have the permitted uses here in the B N that's kinda bolded for you guys. So if this were to be approved as B N, um, apartments would be allowed, automobile sales, auto trucks parts store. You can kinda see some of the permitted uses here.
Okay, so a lot of options.
And then if you look at the special exception uses that we also have up here, these are, you know, in some situations, these are okay, automobile repair shop, brew pub, lumber store, lumber retail store. Without an X would be a variance. So if they wanted to rezone to B N, but also, but then do a construction equipment sales agency, they would have to prove a hardship to get approval for a use variance.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Questions or calls from the commission?
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Oh, sorry, we were talking amongst ourselves, so.
What was the recommendation from staff?
So we, we don't necessarily give recommendations. We're just giving you all the facts that y'all can make the determination on.
Pull back up the very first slide. You mentioned annexation and the kinda how it conforms with-
Yeah, so we do look at frame, so that's the thing. We look at framework, framework, the annexation is definitely appropriate. You know, this is an island in the midst of- an island in the midst of um the city of Tuscaloosa. But then we also look at framework and what it identifies on the future land use character map as well as we've already had this discussion on this zoning district for the future, um, which is where that general commercial uh portion that Haley went over comes into play. As well as in April, we talked about how we were gonna remove self-storage facilities as an approved as an approved use in what would be general commercial, which is what we've identified this this property to be in the future.
Any other questions for staff or clarification? All right, haven't heard none. Commission, we got a companion case here. We've got an annexation request first for annexation eleven twenty-four annexing point zero-three acres at forty-seven thirty Harkey Lane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Commission for us, we have a rezoning request of Z zero-six twenty-four, rezoning what we just annexed from R1 to BN. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Mr. Dooley.
Okay, Blake, before we start voting, you did say that we are it's okay to consider a use, the exact use that's proposed, when we are voting on whether or not.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. You can start on any of them.
Put on spot.
No.
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 Hey, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, Commission. Next up, we have companion case B. This consists of an annexation, rezoning, and subdivision. We'll begin with the annexation, which is AN twelve twenty-four. This is to annex approximately four and a half acres located at one-two-three-one Inglewood Village Drive. Here is the vicinity map. We're down sixty-nine south, in between Old Greensboro and sixty-nine south, near the Wynn Dixie Shopping Center. And here are those existing annexation boundaries. Um, a portion of this parcel is already currently in city limits, near the roundabout. And here is an aerial view. Uh, they're requesting to annex into city limits for access to city infrastructure. This has been identified as a primary expansion area. And there were no issues with this request. ESD stated that they will not service this area. Moving on to the rezoning, we have Z oh-seven twenty-four. DP Properties LLC petitions to rezone approximately four and a half acres. Same place, one-two-three-one Inglewood Village Drive, going from R1 to BH. Again, we are in the same spot, looking at the same parcel. Um, a portion does touch current city limits. That is zoned BH as well. And you've got BN north of this. And again, an aerial overview. And here is that site today. It is vacant today. And pretty straightforward, and that should say BH, not BN. Um, they would like to zone the property for commercial use. Again, an overview of that lot. Um, the zoning request and the intended uses do conform to framework. This has been identified as corridor commercial as well as GC, general commercial in this area. And here is that future land use character map. And with those permitted uses, on the right-hand side, you'll see what is permitted within BH. And what is a special exception. Currently, um, you'll see in just a moment, the subdivision will be for five lots. They have an intended user for one of those lots, which will be a professional doctor's office, I do believe. Um, so that is conforming with current zoning and future. Any questions on the rezoning before we get into the subdivision? Okay, we have S thirty-nine twenty-four. This is the resurvey of commercial lot eight of Inglewood Village Phase Four, consisting of five commercial lots, again, on that four and a half acres, and we are in the same place on Inglewood Village. And here is the plat with contours and without. So again, this is a five-lot commercial subdivision. I believe the intended user is for lot sixteen. That is closest to that roundabout. And they are requesting a variance from sidewalks. Um, however, they're requesting the variance from sidewalks and we've asked that they still put the sidewalks in place at LDP.
So the variance requests, why are we asking for it then if they're gonna?
For recording purposes. It allows them to record it faster without having to do the public.
You want them, but you're gonna want them.
So you have to you have to build the public improvement is the way our subdivision regulations are written. We can we can guarantee that the sidewalk is a part of the land development per permit process.
And that way, as they sell off each lot, they don't have to, you know, they don't have to build those sidewalks prior to selling off each lot.
Any further questions?
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. Petitioner.
I'm Alan McGifford, McGifford Associates, twenty-eight fourteen Stillman Boulevard. I'm here representing DP Properties. This was one contiguous lot, all lot eight originally. All the infrastructure is there except for sidewalks. Um, they have a potential buyer for lot sixteen at this point. Rather than come back to you every lot, convince the owner to, let's go ahead and divide it into lots. If somebody wants to buy two lots, we'll come back to you and take a lot line out. The sidewalks would theoretically go to nowhere today, so we we recommend that be left to the LDP process and sidewalks be built as it's developed. And we are as we've been doing, we're bringing it all into the city and all city services are there.
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You want to sign up?
Yes, Karen Dixon.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Um, my name is Karen Dixon, um, address one-zero-one-five-five Maxwell Way. My house is lot one. Um, I have a two-year-old. I don't want a business in my yard. I mean, that's literally, you got open space and you see where my lot is and then our fence. Yes, that's my house. I don't mind having lot nineteen eighteen all that way up there, but I feel like with that where Maxwell Way starts coming into our neighborhood, I feel like lot twenty should just be left land. I don't feel like I should have to look out my backyard and there's a business right there in my backyard, especially having a two-year-old. And it's a lot of people, I mean, that neighborhood has kids. Inglewood's right across the street from it. So my issue is not that it's necessarily being built, but I don't want it that far back on my property or that close to my land, especially having children.
Now, that is a buffer, right? Is that there's a buffer, thirty-five-foot buffer, right?
Yeah.
It is, but you're where my house is at, even with the buffer, it's still gonna hit the back of my my fence.
Okay, I I didn't know if you realized it was a buffer there, okay.
That's still, to me, for me, I don't feel like that's enough space between us, neighborhood and business. I don't want a business right on top of my house.
What's there now?
Just the space.
The trees or?
No, it's not trees. They come and cut the grass. I don't know if Tuscaloosa County does, but they do come and there's a trailer that comes and cuts the grass there. And they cut across the street in the open spot where Chestnut Trace is. And like I said, I don't mind nineteen eighteen all that up. I just feel like it should be a bigger space in between my our house and businesses. 'Cause the technically, even with the buffer, like I said, if I look out my backyard, I'm still gonna see the building right there on me, out here, everything going on, you know?
Well, you know, the property owners request to come to the city, which right now it's in the county.
Right.
And you've got really no protection with it being in the county. They could do anything they wanted to there. So in a way, coming to the city will definitely give you more protection. And that's, I think, when the bring back the drawing, talked about the setbacks and building and buffers and things like that. And, you know, they'd come back with us with a plan for that property, that one life it ever does develop. I'm saying it will, it won't, but.
So it's a possibility it won't happen. And see, that's my thing. I'm new to this, you know, I just got the letter and I just.
Yeah, it's it's been there, the land's been there forever and now we've got one, they got a, I think you heard the the petitioner say that they and it's supposed to come back five times to try to get the lot subdivided. He's going to do it now and they'll, you know, sell them off as needed. Again, the biggest thing protection would be that it would come to the city, comes into R1. They it's not probably a viable R1 lot. Um, and the property owner does have the rights to ask for this. And, you know, we're gonna do our best based on setbacks and landscape buffers. We're very sensitive to commercial property.
Only affects us really because our house is the only one right there. Everybody else is on down in the neighborhoods that don't affect them.
Understand, understand completely. Um, like lot fifteen, that's a, I'm assuming that's a, is that in the county too? Or is that, so you got prop, you're surrounded by county property right now.
Right.
Uh, who knows what they will ever do with lot fifteen, the open space lot fifteen that is. I think we we all hear your concern. Just know that if that properties, that parcel is developed, they will come back.
Okay.
And that's when we'll make darn sure that you're not infringed upon, whether it be noise, light, those types of things.
Right.
Um, so we are sensitive to what you're saying, but I think you got a little bit of time to not worry.
Okay.
But the petitioner's here and if it ever comes back before us, you'll get notified.
Okay.
You know, and hopefully at that point, the two, we always encourage the parties, the joining parties to get together and say, here's my concern, here's how they can help protect you
Okay.
and give you a safe living environment. So that's that's really all we can do here tonight is tell you that.
And and if, okay, I was, go ahead, I'm sorry. If that if that stays county, that buffer may not, that buffer may go away. It can be as close to your house, it can be closer to your house if somebody.
They could put a trailer park there.
They could put a trailer park right next to your fence, basically.
So.
So that, I agree with.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We do hear you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else care? I don't think anyone signed up, but anyone care to speak for or against? Petitioner, you have any comments? I mean, I think I think we represented what would happen in the future.
Lot twenties, only access is to Inglewood Village Drive. It cannot access to the west, it cannot access to the south. And that lot's about ten feet higher than the back end of her lot. So the buildings are gonna be up on the front from a construction standpoint. Does have the thirty-foot buffer. And it could be at some day, um, changed to a impervious wall that would come along with the LDP for that lot.
Right, thank you. All right, anyone else care to speak for or against? Having heard none. Commission, before us, we have an annexation request, twelve twenty-four, annexing four-point-five acres, twelve thirty-one Inglewood Village Drive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Commission for us, we have Z zero-seven twenty-four DP Properties petition to rezone from R1 to BH, which is congruent with the the property joining that is BH. Do you have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Hornsby.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission before us, we have S thirty-nine twenty-four. Five-lot subdivision, but sidewalk variance request, which will be addressed at the LDP process as we develop. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Dooley.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, Commission. Next case we have, we have a companion case C, consisting of a rezoning and a subdivision. We'll begin with the rezoning, which is Z oh-eight twenty-four. Cypress Properties LLC petitions to rezone approximately zero-point-nine-eight acres located at four-zero-zero-five Sixth Avenue from R1 to R2. This is in Council District Seven. Here's the vicinity map. We are off of Greensboro, south of I twenty. Skyland Elementary is to the east. Here's the existing zoning today. This lot is zoned R1. They're requesting to go to R2, which they are bounded by to the south. And here is an aerial overview of that lot. They're requesting to rezone from R1 to R2 to allow for setbacks and minimum lot size requirements to conform to the surrounding neighborhood. Here is the plat that we'll look at in just a moment, but this is the reason for that request tonight. This does conform to framework, the zoning and the use. Um, we've identified this as suburban residential, which allows for single-family development. And here is that future land use map. All of the permitted uses within R2. And the special exceptions. Jumping into the subdivision, this is to create four single-family residential lots. This is the resurvey of lot eight, lot eight Burke's Garden. We're in the same area. Here's the plat with contours and without. So again, today it is one lot. They're requesting to create four. There are two existing homes on the site today on proposed lot one and proposed lot four. And then creating two additional um to allow for single-family homes. We do just want to put it in the record that the if approved, they will not be able to record the subdivision until they have either removed the existing shed on lot three or have gotten an approval from the zoning board of adjustment. Um, because it cannot be the primary use on a residential lot, a shed can't be. And also, we need to uh dimension that existing storage building on lot one. It needs to be at least five feet from any property lines. So just a little, a couple of things to get done before we could record if this is approved. And they are requesting variances from sidewalks, driveway dedication, as well as lot configuration.
Engineering.
We concur with those requests.
One caveat to that, though. We as planning are a little bit confused for the reason why they're requesting the lot configuration variance. Um, that's coming for lot three and we just aren't too sure why we can't draw a straight line and not have that request at all, so.
We'll have to ask some.
So it is an existing gravel drive today. But any questions for staff?
Not yet. Any questions for staff? Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Michael McGuire. Um, to address a couple of things real quick, the storage building and the shed, I I believe has been removed. At least that's what my survey crew told me. They removed it about two or three weeks ago, but I will double-check. The reason we did not extend the line between three and four straight is for some reason that house faces due west. So we were trying to leave them with a front yard, plus that's the only access they have is the existing gravel drives. It comes in and kind of makes a ninety-degree turn, goes into the house. Like Haley said, lot one and four both have existing houses on it. Um, city water, city sewer. Um, of course, we'll tie into those services. Um, and if y'all got any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So the house faces west?
Yes, and that doesn't make every house on Fortieth Street faces thirtieth, Fortieth Street. For some reason, that one doesn't.
The variance request makes a little more sense.
And we're going to help things. Uh, we're gonna put a wood privacy fence coming down lot three um to separate three and four, so they should kind of have a private front yard.
They get to look at wood fence.
Hmm, yeah.
We at least paint it.
We can paint it.
All right. Any other questions for petitioner? Anyone sign up for or against? Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none, bring back a variance request, please. We got what, this is, we got two cases here. Commission before us, we have Z0824 Cypress Properties requesting to rezone from R1 to R2. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission before us, we have S3824, resurvey of Lot 8 Burke's Gardens, variance request, all okay with city engineering. A motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, Mr. Harrison, I think this is the one you needed to recuse from. So we've got, we're moving on to the annexation request for the evening. We have AN0924, this is to annex approximately 1.8 acres located at 15129 Marina Drive. Here's a vicinity map. We are pretty far up north, up 43, along the lake. Here is the existing annexation boundary. This parcel will, does touch the lake, which is how they're able to request this annexation. Here is the outline. And this is currently being redeveloped from the former Bob's Marina to the new Dockside Restaurant. And so they are requesting to annex into city limits to allow for Sunday alcohol sales. And this has been identified as a future service and expansion area. Talking with other city departments, there were no issues. However, Tuscaloosa Police Department, they stated, I anticipate that this will cause an increase in expenditure of police resources to service this address. However, it is unknown how much or how often those resources will be needed. Other than that, there were no issues, and Environmental Services stated that services will not be provided here.
Dooley noted with TPD.
Dooley noted with TPD.
We'll do a good thorough background check on these guys, won't we?
Ah, should.
All right, making sure.
All right, we'll let the applicant come up.
All right, commission, pretty straightforward here. We've got an annexation request, 0924, the 1.8 acres located at 15129 Marina Drive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, welcome to the seat.
All right, next up, we have AN1024. This is to annex approximately 1.1 acres located at 17060 Hayes Road. Again, we are far up north, off on the lake. We are at Hayes Road, parcel is a lake frontage parcel. And the aerial overview, this is to annex in for access to city schools. This has been identified as a future service expansion area. And there were no issues with this request, and Environmental Services said, we're not coming that far north right now. So we will not provide services to this area.
Petitioner here, wants to make a comment. Petitioner.
Hello, I'm Russell Ringo. I am the owner of the address at 17060 Hayes Road. And thank you for listening to my petition request. Yes, I would like to be zoned into the city for the city school access, North Ridge in particular. My youngest daughter is 16, and we think it provides her some better opportunities for her goals in life. Number one, certainly the school system at North Ridge is very highly rated. And two, she wants to run track. Northside did not have a track program for the girls this year, and she would like to do that as well. So she also rides horses at Westminster Farms, which is just a drop in a bucket from North Ridge High School. So that is why we're requesting the annexation. Thank you.
Very much. Anyone opposed or care to speak against this petition request? Having heard none, commission before us, annexation 1024, the 1.1 acres located at 17060 Hayes Road. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, welcome to the seat.
All right, moving on to our preliminary plats for the evening, we'll start with S3424. This is the CLSB subdivision, a resurvey of Lot 4B of the resurvey of Lot 4, Site A, from Tuscaloosa County Industrial Park Number 1. This is a reconfiguration of two existing industrial lots on approximately 22.87 acres located at 1301 and 1351 Industrial Park Drive. This is in Council District 1. Here's the vicinity map. We are in the industrial park, just west of the Nash, of the Tuscaloosa Airport. Here's an aerial overview of the two lots we're looking at. Here's a copy of the plat with contours and without. So where the red dashes are, that's where the current lot line exists, and they are moving it right there. And in doing so, they're requesting variances from lot configuration as well as sidewalks.
Engineering.
We concur with those requests.
Petitioner.
Mike Hicks, we heard that Hicks associates, 2728 Lurleen Wallace Boulevard, Northport. Excuse me. Here on behalf of the owner, who couldn't be here, this Stan Payton, he likes to present his own projects, but he couldn't be here tonight. He, he has a potential project in mind for that property, and he wanted to incorporate a little bit of that parking area to go with it.
So the property to the north is redevelopable, are that's the plan?
Yes, yes. He owns both sides of that. He owns both lots now, and he's just moving that lot line between.
So you'd be taking half the parking spaces there, right?
Yes.
And what about from a legal standpoint of park, parking requirements for the existing building?
They provided the parking calculations, and it's good for both sites.
Yeah, it's only 0.8 spaces per employee, and, you know, his offices are in that building, and he has very few employees.
Mike, you, the, I mean, I, right now, your lot line's going down the middle, new lot line's going down the middle curve. You're gonna have to access it through the southern entrance. You don't have an access to the lot that it's been.
When he develops that piece to the north, he'll access from the street.
So he's not using it?
Right.
Any more questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay, having heard none. Commission before us, we have S3424, CLSB subdivision, reconfiguration for a two-lot subdivision. All two variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Next, we have S3624. This is Fifth Avenue Townhomes, a resurvey of Newton 3 subdivision. This is consisting of 14 townhome lots and two open space lots on approximately 1.8 acres located at and around 2820 and 2830 Fifth Avenue. This is in Council District 7. Here's the vicinity map. We are near the intersection of Fifth and 29th, south of Central High School, right near Sumner Place. Here's an aerial overview, three lots today. Here's a copy of the plat with contours and without. You all saw this previously. This was a companion case with a rezoning. They were successful in their rezoning. It's R4 now, but their subdivision has expired, so they're here before you again for reapproval. 14 townhome lots, they have sidewalks all around the development, accessing from a private alley along the rear, providing buffer to the eastern, well, actually, we're a little disoriented. North is running east to west for us right now. So they are providing buffers to the northern property, and with two entry points along Fifth and 29th.
So nothing has changed since we saw this previously?
Nope. And then they provided some renderings, and they're requesting half-street improvements as a variance request.
And that was a strange variance request we had previously.
That's right, and, yep.
Engineering, has anything changed from your perspective?
No, sir.
Thank you. Uh, petitioner.
Good evening. Ken Faunt, 2132 Sweet D, Tuscaloosa, McFarlane Boulevard East, Crimson Realty. Nothing's changed. Timing, interest rates, we've fought through, and we have an investor that's joined our group, so we're ready to get started.
Is that what you were gonna tell us when you're in favor of it? Somebody needed to call you. Okay, well, I mean, nothing's changed. We approved it once before. Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this request? Okay, having heard none, again, this has been approved by its body, asking for another extension. Do I have, this is what, S3624, one variance request, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
All right, next we have S3724. This is Factory Edition Number 3, a resurvey of Factory Edition Number 2. This is consisting of one industrial lot on approximately half an acre located at 2851 South Side Drive. This is in Council District 2. Here's the vicinity map. We are just west of I-359. Zooming in a little bit, this is an aerial view. The northernmost lot had a successful street vacation a couple of years back, and so they've now come to take their three lots and request a lot consolidation. Here's the plat with contours and without. And with this consolidation, they're requesting variances from half-street improvements as well as sidewalks.
Engineering.
No objections.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marty Montgomery, Montgomery Hinkle Land Surveying. Yes, this plat was recorded in 2022, and since that time, they've had 28th Street vacated, and they want to add that into the lot.
Is there a use plan? Do we have a plan?
No, no.
Makes sense. Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone sign forward? Speak for or against, please come forward. Having heard none. What's our variance request again, please? All right, commission before us, we have S3724, Factory Edition with two variance requests, half-street improvements, sidewalks. Engineering has no issues with it. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, next we have S4024. This is 7414 Old Greensboro Road. It's consisting of two lots on approximately 3.07 acres located at 7414 Old Greensboro Road. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. We're right at the intersection of Old Greensboro Road and Crabtree Road. Here's an aerial overview. There is an existing home on the lot today. Here's the plat with contours and without. It's one lot today. They would like to parcel off the existing home and leave the remainder of Lot 2. And they're requesting variances from sidewalks, half-street improvements, and cap sewer.
Engineering.
No objections.
Petitioner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Cabinetists with Cabinetists Engineering, 600 Lurleen Wallace Boulevard South. Yeah, this, the people that own this, they've redone the house. It was in pretty bad shape. They bought it a few years back, and their goal is to create two lots. They will sell the house on that lot, on Lot 1, and then on Lot 2, they'll, they'll build their house.
Pretty clear. Any questions for petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Commission before us, we have S4024, 7414 Old Greensboro Road, two lot subdivision with three variance requests. Engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Next up, we have S4124, Skelton Farm Subdivision, which is now Homestead Acres Subdivision. This is consisting of eight residential lots on approximately 24 and a half acres located west of 11780 Joe Namath Road, and this is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. I truly don't have another landmark. We are just really far north, off of Joe Namath and John Swindle. We're near those intersections, and it is one large piece today that they are requesting to split into eight. Here's the plat with contours and without. Each lot is a minimum of three acres in size. And they're requesting variances from cap sewer, drainage study, and half-street improvements.
Engineering.
No objections.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Josh Bonner with Centel Engineering, 639 Black Bears Way. Staff did an excellent job presenting this case, and I'm here if y'all have any questions.
How did Joe Namath get a road name that far north?
I think he played football.
I think so, but that's odd. I mean, I can see it down here somewhere, but. Any questions for petitioner? Thank you, sir. Anyone care to speak for or against this request? Having heard none. Commission before us, we have S4124, Skelton Farm Subdivision, three variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Next, we have S4224. This is the resurvey of Lot 1 of Deal Family Subdivision Number 2. It's consisting of two lots on approximately 61.9 acres located at 13501 Charlottesville Circle. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. We're off of 69 South, along the lake. Here's the lot today. Here's a copy of the plat with contours and without. So this is a two-lot subdivision. There's an existing home, the northeast portion of the lot. So they are requesting to parcel out about eight and a half acres, creating Lot 2R, leaving the remainder, which is totaling 53 and a half acres. They have a, I believe that's a 60-foot wide access leading to that home. Oh, I did. Zoomed up just a little bit, so we can see a little bit better. This is the northern portion, again, close to eight and a half acres along the lake, and that is a 60-foot access. And the southern portion, they're requesting variances from public street frontage for that Lot 2R, as well as a drainage study and cap sewer. City staff request that if this were approved, a condition is placed on the final plat that Lot 1R cannot be further subdivided unless a public right-of-way is in place.
Engineering on the variance request? With the exception of the adding that to the plat, right, on the, if 1R subdivided further.
Yeah, we're okay with that, but I, I, it just leads to a little curiosity as to why they can't create public road frontage today for Lot 2R.
Why what, Mike? For 2R?
Well.
I didn't, I didn't hear.
So if you, if you go back and you look at the aerial view, where that 60-foot access is today, it's already a little paved street. It carries you up to Lot 2.
Right.
Lot 1's gonna own property on both sides of that, and I'm just curious what the purpose of that is.
Is that little other little part of the property too? Is that little other little part of the property too? That little red outlier there?
I'm pretty sure that was counted for in this. It's that sliver along here.
Go back. What was that? That's that sliver right there. Okay, okay. I got, okay, I see.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, petitioner?
Good evening, Gary Cobb of Black Warrior Survey and representing K and B Lake Properties. Mike, would you, we can do a flag down the eastern property line for street frontage.
I would prefer that. I, I think granting of the variance of public street frontage should be a very special condition that can't be met, and there's just no reason that this, this, each one of these lots can't have public road frontage.
It's no problem.
So now we're changing the request though, aren't we?
If, well, he'll have to bring the plat back to you revised for approval. So it's either that or.
Based on this conversation.
Right.
So we'll have to bring the preliminary plat back, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Either that, or we put the condition on the, on the plat.
So that they don't come back and we do the condition?
You're saying conditioned to make it the flag lot, and then we'll approve that, and you're okay with that? Staff's okay with that? Legal's okay with that? I think that's what petitioner, he wants to get it approved, don't you?
Yes.
Now, we're, we're in, we're all in agreement that it'll have to come back to you with a revised property lines.
Just take away the statement I said.
Was it best to continue it then, or?
Yeah, yeah, best, best.
Because you aren't allowed to access lots by private easements in the city subdivision regulations.
So. His, his best.
We, we let them get this far with the stipulation that they would add the note to the plat. So my curiosity was just, why did we not look at doing it and meet the public road frontage? That was the question I asked, not so much to say that, that I wanted to see it changed, because we could have definitely made that statement in our review process. It just brings out the curiosity in me that whoever's gonna buy Lot One, what are they gonna do with all that property on the other side of that road? Was my, was my curiosity, but we O C E is willing to sign this plat as long as there's a note on there that Lot One cannot be re-subdivided without public street frontage.
Your call. What would you prefer? You want to take the vote with that note on there, or do you want to come back with a?
I'm fine with the note on there that, you know, Lot One R cannot be further subdivided without street frontage.
Yeah, we're good with that note, but if you were to go with the public street frontage, you would have to come back. So if he's good with the note, and if we're good with the note.
Stay with the status quo.
What, I guess what you're saying, if you ever develop the, the remainder of it, that road's gotta be dedicated.
Well, either that or the lot configuration has got to give them frontage to a public street.
Lot Two R.
Well.
Right?
No.
No, I'm saying if you reconfigure, if, if, if they wanted to sell off this, this piece right here, it's gotta have public road frontage.
Right, 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 okay.
Which means that you've gotta create a property boundary line that gives you frontage here, or this road right here has got to be built to county standards, and they've got to prove it and dedicate a right-of-way for it.
You good?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's good? Anybody care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay, bringing back up the, uh, variance request. Commission before us, we have the S- forty-two twenty-four, three variance requests. However, we do want to add a stipulation that if Lot One R is subdivided further, there will be a requirement to have public street frontage. Do we have a motion and a second under those stipulations?
Motion.
Second.
Can I go, Mr. Dooley?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, commission, last case for the evening. We have S- forty-three twenty-four. This is Lake Cove Estates number four, consisting of nine lots on approximately ten acres north of one-one-eight-four-five Grandview Drive and south of one-one-eight-seven-eight Grandview Drive. This is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map. We're off of forty-three. Looking at the area within the black boundary on the western side. Here's the plat with contours and without. This is a subdivision you all have seen before. Um, similar to earlier in the evening, the approval has expired, so they're back before you tonight. Again, uh, ten acres total, creating nine lots. Each lot is at least an acre in size. And they're requesting variances from cap sewer and half-street improvements.
Engineering?
We have no objections.
Petitioner?
Sorry, I did want to note, um, you will see on the map, it says right-of-way to be vacated. That is not included with this petition that will need to be handled through the county. Um, so just keep that in mind. If this plat is approved, you're not approving the right-of-way vacation.
That was one that we talked about the turnaround, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, I remember it now. Petitioner?
Mike Hicks with Hernan Hicks Associates, twenty-seven twenty-eight Lurleen Wallace Boulevard, Northport. As she stated, this plat was approved, but the time ran out on it, and he's, uh, wanting to go ahead with construction. The, uh, the county has agreed, when the cul-de-sac is built and accepted, then they'll, uh, vacate that right-of-way by plat. It was created by plat. No. That's pretty much it. Nothing's changed from the original.
Any questions for petitioner? Anyone sign up to speak for or against?
Mr. Chairman, had one person sign up, Mr. Mike Butts.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Mike Butts, and Joe Butts is my dad. Uh, he recently passed away back in, uh, April the eighteenth. Uh, I'm the executor of his estate. Uh, and I will also inherit the house and the property that is located at eleven-eight-thirty-seven Grandview Drive, which is Lot Thirty-three there at the bottom. Uh, it's my understanding that this particular piece of property has obviously been brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission multiple times now. And with the most recent back in November, uh, eighteenth of twenty-nineteen, uh, almost five years ago, um, by Mr. Cobb with Black Warrior Surveying at that particular time. Uh, and back on November the eighteenth, uh, my dad came and spoke, uh, here in front of the commission. As kind of a spokesperson for, uh, some of the neighbors, uh, who have adjoining property and expressed some issues and concerns that I'm not really sure were ever, uh, fully addressed at that time. Uh, so today, uh, felt like I kinda needed to come and try to gain a better understanding of how things were left, uh, with the commission back in November of twenty-nineteen, uh, see what has transpired since then, and kinda see where we are today. Uh, before we discuss the requested variances, um, I can recall that these were some of the concerns that were raised at that time. Um, one would had to deal with preliminary, a preliminary set of restrictive covenants uh, that were supposed to be issued to the city by the petitioner, uh, at that time, Mr. Tidmore. Uh, I don't know if that was done or not, but it kinda alluded to, uh, some erosion control issues, non-on-street parking, square footage of the homes to be built. And I think the covenants mentioned two thousand square feet, but the houses, uh, in this area are three thousand plus square feet. Uh, would also like to see something to limit the removal of large trees, similar to what is in the Cherokee Estates covenant. And again, I just didn't know if, uh, these preliminary set of restrictive covenants uh, were issued to the city by the petitioner back in November of twenty-nineteen or since then. Also, uh, there was, uh, a, uh, I think there may have been a drainage study issued to the city for review. I'm not sure. Um, and I know that that's required of the developer who owns or controls more than ten acres, which this is ten acres. Uh, and I didn't know if a study had been conducted and what the results were of that study, and had those been submitted to the city. And I think the big question, which was actually raised by, uh, Mr. Harrison, uh, the infamous, uh, hammerhead turnaround, uh, that was discussed back then. Uh, and I know that the, the developer knows that they'll have to build whatever the county tells them that they'll have to build. Okay? Um, I've, I've, you know, talking to some of our, my neighbors, um, have basically some of the same set of concerns as before uh, in relation to the requested variances, talking about half-street improvements. I think the, we're all in agreement, uh, for the street to maintain its current width and configuration, but request that the new subdivision have provisions, uh, that there will be a uniform design and appearance to both sides of the street. So whatever's done on the new side matches up with whatever is done on the old side. Uh, any new utilities or right-of-ways required for this, uh, go on the new side of the subdivision, not on the old side. And a mandatory provision for control of stormwater drainage that may be brought about because of any new development. I know that there were some water drainage issues from prior development in the neighborhood. Um, I think my dad even brought some pictures and offered to show, uh, to the commit, uh, the committee, so, uh, back in nineteen. In relation to the cap sanitary, sanitary sewer, uh, no objections as long as the, uh, three-hundred-foot setback is maintained as these lots are within the three-hundred foot of, uh, Lake Tuscaloosa. Uh, and request that there not be an addition, additional variance for any unusual septic system sometime in the future that would not be permitted without some kind of special variance. And then, uh, third, and la, uh, the construction of a complete cul-de-sac um, back in November of twenty-nineteen, uh, on November the first, I think my dad met with the county engineer, Scott Anders, and then with, uh, engineering coordinator, Mike Henderson, uh, to discuss and look at the cul-de-sac. Um, and the county's horseshoe-shaped, uh, right-of-way between lots thirty-four and, and thirty-five there. Uh, it's my understanding that from that meeting, the county had not vac, vacated its current right-of-way. Uh, and in order for them to consider vacating it, they would have, there would have to be an acceptable alternative provided, uh, which would be a full, uh, cul-de-sac. Uh, I think my dad even drew out a preliminary, preliminary sketch of a proposed cul-de-sac turnaround that is similar to existing, um, horseshoe-shaped turnarounds, you know, in the subdivision, uh, that would have kind of an island in the middle, uh, with large trees, uh, some landscaping, basically had a nice appearance, uh, that it wasn't just a circular, you know, uh, area of concrete or asphalt, uh, there. Uh, that would match up with the other horseshoe-shaped, uh, turnarounds that are in the subdivision. And I think, uh, during that, that meeting back in twenty-nineteen, uh, it was determined that the developer would have to demonstrate a turnaround that met the satisfaction and approval of the office of the city engineer. Uh, the office of the, uh, the city engineer, the fire department would have to be involved to make sure their standards are met and that the city would not allow the final plat to be signed per sub subdivision regulations until all infrastructure was in place before lots can be constructed. And I think Mr. Harrison, you even said that, uh, in your opinion, that all three of these, uh, they would kinda wash out, uh, during the LDP process, but just wanted to kinda revisit, uh, these concerns, just, you know, and make sure that they didn't fall through the cracks, okay? Uh, from, uh, and kinda just get a status update since it has been five years, uh, and to kinda see what has transpired, uh, since then. I would also note that, uh, the, the preliminary plat that, uh, shows that Michael Tidmore as the owner of Lake Cove Estates number two, Lot A, which is there between twenty-nine and thirty, right there. Uh, it shows he, him as the owner, but, uh, there exists a common ownership of Lot A by all property owners on the Lake Cove Estates number two. And then we hereby retain all such ownership rights and request that nothing pertaining to the newly proposed Lake Cove Estates Four shall be, uh, presented as to be in conflict with these rights. And we hereby respectfully request that any and all rights that we have individually and or jointly with regards to this matter be fully preserved. Thank you.
Hicks? And I guess our engineering has a lot, a lot of questions there, comments. This goes back several years ago. You wanna address between yourself and our staff? Some of these issues that were raised?
Well, obviously, any construction will be done, uh, in adherence to city Tuscaloosa. Design plans, uh, erosion control will be a high priority right there by the lake anyway. And I don't, I can't speak to the, uh, covenants.
Yeah, some of those things were, I mean, that's, when was this approved, nineteen? We all were here then?
So I I wanna, I wanna reiterate what, what Mr. Hicks just said. You know, before construction activity begins here, a set of construction plans will be approved, not only through the office of the city engineer, but also the county engineering department. These, the city has no ownership of this roadway. Uh, you know, the road will be owned and maintained by the county. Um, any, any stipulations of a grassed median inside the cul-de-sac that you mentioned to preserve a large tree or, or whatever, that's gonna be the county's call. They're gonna end up maintaining this road in perpetuity, not the city's. It will be a part of the approval process and can coordinate and work with the county on anything like that. Uh, our office has nothing to do with restrictive covenants. That's between the, the landowners. Uh, so we can't speak to that. We will be very, very specific in reviewing the construction documents related to erosion control and, and how stormwater might be collected and discharged to the lake, because we're highly sensitive to water quality that goes into Lake Tuscaloosa.
Let me, let me ask this. Okay, so this has obviously been several years, and one of the four of you were here then, and probably two or three of us were here then. And we approved it, correct? Was it unanimous? Do we know anything about the voting of it? And then I guess the other question would be, are, I mean, nothing's changed from the plan, right? That's being proposed tonight, same plan as it was in nineteen. Is that correct? And if so, has there anything changed from a city standard standpoint, or? I guess we're saying, has anything changed since this was approved five years ago?
From the subdivision piece? No, I don't believe so from twenty-nineteen. This was the plat that was, the preliminary plat that was approved in twenty-nineteen.
Right.
Um, we've only gotten stricter on our, um, on our construction, what you submit to the city to review and to make sure that there's no runoff, siltation, things like that with the city.
Protection for city water, and then also the lake and the neighbors, of course. So we've gotten more diligent in our requirements.
Yeah, and also, the, uh, the fire marshal's, uh, cul-de-sac turnaround radio, I think, has been revised based on adoption of a new fire code. So he'll get a relook at that cul-de-sac in the construction plans, and So he'll get a relook at that cul-de-sac in the construction plans and make any comments that it meets standards.
Like, still, we're doing erosion control bonds also now that we're not doing, we weren't doing back then, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So what are the variances again?
Cap sewer and half-street improvements.
On the half-street improvements, you may or may not know, is one half the street already approved and, because I think he said something about each side would match?
So...
Do you have curb and gutter or something?
So he mentioned, he mentioned that as a condition of a restrictive covenants, which again, our office has no authority to do. As old as Lake Cove number two is, I doubt there's any curb and gutter there. So a half-street improvement would basically create a un-uniform look. You would add curb and gutter to one side of this road, you would have to then create drainage structures to carry the roadway runoff. And quite frankly, I feel like it's in the best interest of the city's lake if we let the stormwater runoff pass through grass, ditches and swells and so forth before entering the lake, instead of being discharged by a pipe.
I agree, I just misunderstood, I was trying to understand if he said one side was already developed and this side wasn't going to be out. But if one side's not, then the other side shouldn't be.
Well, we won't change drainage anyway. Anyone else care to speak for or against this petition request? Please come forward.
I'm Donna Gass, I live at 11845 Graham View Drive.
You probably say all that again because you weren't close enough to the microphone to get it on the record. So name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Name and address for the record, please.
Donna Gass, 11845 Graham View Drive, North Port, Alabama 35475. I'm number 32 on that map. And I was here five years ago when this was brought up. I don't remember it being approved. I thought it was tabled because Mr. Tidmore never approached us. He was supposed to meet with us, we met once at a church, nothing really came out of it. I thought there was supposed to be a drainage study, there was a lot of things that were discussed. I don't remember anything about it being approved. So I'm confused because I was here.
It was continued and then approved, apparently. It was continued and then approved.
Two times?
Two, yeah, so two meetings, once it was continued and then it was approved.
I was here once, at one meeting.
Was it approved the next meeting after the continuance?
I believe, we believe that's how it went.
Do we remember what the continuance was to work on? By work on the turnaround?
Possibly the turnaround.
Turnaround was a big issue if I remember correctly, because we were worried about it.
It is, that's right in front of my house and Mr. Buck's house. When was the second meeting?
When was it approved? When was it approved?
It could have been December if it was...
Yeah, so we didn't know about it. So how, why would we not know about it? That doesn't make sense.
Can't speak to 2019, yeah.
It should have been, is there a second notification sent out when it's continued or is it all based on you're here, you need to know it's continued to the next month?
Yeah.
We didn't get anything.
There wouldn't have been a second notification.
Yeah, there wouldn't have been.
Wouldn't have been?
It would not have been. If it was continued at this meeting, then the prior notification would...
I just don't understand because y'all said for him to talk to us, get it worked out and then come back, so nothing was ever worked out and he never talked to us again. That's just frustrating, thank you.
There it is.
Anyone else care to come forward and speak for or against?
Oh, it says, actually, it says that we approved it in November. I see, okay.
Continued from October.
You would have been aware that it was continued for 30 days at that meeting.
I don't remember that, I want to remember saying that Mr. Tidmore was supposed to meet with us and address our concern.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Bob Way. I live at 704 Green Bright Place, North Port. I own lots 28 and 29, right across from, from the, what would be the southern portion of this. And, for example, lot 35 is right across from my lot. I'm generally in favor of this, of this. I agree that the turnaround is the big issue and it needs to, needs to be executed so that it doesn't interfere with those property owners down there on that end because they've got developed yards out there and promises have been made that it would not interfere with that. So that's, that's the big issue with me. That and the vacating, vacating the right-of-way, that where trucks turn around now and back down the road. We've got garbage truck backing down the road with nobody walking to make sure it's safe. Now, they do have cameras, I'll give them that, but still, it's not as safe as it should be. And the other day, a furniture truck turned around at the right-of-way that's to be vacated and back down the road, no cameras, nobody was outside, there were two people in the truck, one of them could have gotten out, but they just don't. So that's, that's a dangerous situation for people and pets. And if people build houses, I think they'll build ice houses on one acre lots. All of these lots are at least pretty much the same size as the lots that are on the lake. So it's in keeping with the subdivision. The execution is the thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I mean, I think you're right about the turnaround was the big issue. I remember the conversation about garbage trucks backing down, get to 30 through 33. Anyone else care to speak for or against? If not, we will close and, care to speak, please come forward. If you want to, please, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
The, I'm Mike Tidmore. I've inherited from the Tidmore-Harrison family. I now own 100% of the property that we're talking about. I have submitted over and over to have a cul-de-sac built by surrendering lot number 34 and a portion, if I have to, of, well, I don't, I don't believe I'll have to need more than lot 34, but if you take away lot 34, that should be more than enough for a fire truck to turn around. Now, my family and Mr. Harrison's family has been fighting this since about 91 because of the problem that Phase Four was not originally recorded. It was supposedly subdivided, but for some reason, it was not recorded in the 70s and 80s. So, since about 1991, Mr. and Ms., Mr. Tidmore and Mr. Harrison tried to basically open up Phase Four. Phase One, Two, and Three, we had no problem. It's only Phase Four. And I took over approximately in 2014 or 15 when we inherited the property. Then we bought out the Harrisons. And I'm willing to surrender whatever property it takes to build a cul-de-sac, but I keep hearing, "We got to surrender the property first." Well, I'm not going to surrender nine acres, but I'm willing to surrender whatever it takes from where supposedly Lot 34 is, but that's incorrect, there's not a Lot 34. There's a Phase Four that consists of 9.5 acres. I can't sell the lots. I have tried to have it subdivided. Mr. Cobb has worked on it, he has looked at it, he tried to get this process through back in 2019, he could not get it done. If I can't subdivide the 9.5 acres, then how can I surrender one acre to the city or the county or whoever to have the cul-de-sac built? I don't know what else to do.
Well, here's where now I'm really confused because this is, what you're seeing has been approved, right?
That's correct. So...
Now, I do have a question though, sorry to interrupt you there, but with that cul-de-sac being drawn there, it is digging into lot 34. So that would have to be redrawn to show, right? No?
It's all one track of land.
But, have you approved this before?
You've approved it, but it was never recorded. And so, you own the property, correct? So he's the one that's allowing, he's letting the cul-de-sac go into lot 34. He's giving that property up so that he can build that right-of-way, or he can build that turnaround.
So if you want these, if you want to record these lots and sell them, then you have to build the public improvement, build the cul-de-sac. Get all of your approvals from the city and the county when the construction is done. And then Mr. Hicks can submit a final subdivision plat that shows the correct diameter of the road right-of-way for the cul-de-sac, shows all the lot dimensions and everything that goes with the final plat. We approve that plat and then you can start selling lots.
Well, that's what we tried in 2019. I don't know...
But it wasn't recorded, it didn't record it. He didn't record it.
I don't know that this office ever received any construction drawings. I don't think any construction activity ever happened, so somewhere...
You approved it in 19 and nothing happened?
Nothing's happened, nothing's happened.
Well, does the cart come first or the horse?
In this, in this instance, you've got to build it first.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Go to the bank, get some money, let's get going.
I have a lot in the bank account, waiting to build a cul-de-sac, and I can't get it approved.
Mr. Tidmore, if this is, if this is approved tonight, then you will, should contract with an engineer and he should design this. You would contract with an engineer and he would design this and he would submit it for approval to get recorded.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
And then, when you, if you get this recorded, you go to construction documents and you submit them for permit, LDP, and then you start paying your contractor to go to work. That's, that's the process.
All right, but my question is, how do I get supposedly lot number four, how do I get it subdivided and recorded to give the city and the county that lot for a cul-de-sac?
What is number four, number 34?
No, he means the whole lot.
The whole nine, the whole nine acres.
The whole thing you're calling, well, Phase Four, right? The whole nine acres, you're calling four.
But I can't get it subdivided to give the city and the county...
Well, you're, that's why you're, you're starting right here to the acre. So if we approve it like Mr. Harrison said, then you've got, you've got to carry the ball the rest of the way, we're going to do so much.
So in this situation, if you guys were to approve it, we can work closely with you, we can work closely with Mr. Hicks and we can get this, we can answer those questions.
This is the seventh or eighth person or company that I've hired to get this done. I've got a list of them, I got their names of the corporations. Somebody in Tuscaloosa ought to be able to submit plans and get a cul-de-sac built.
There are, there are firms.
I don't know what I'm doing.
There's firms in Tuscaloosa that do that, yeah.
Are you, are you saying, are you saying that you expect the county or the city to build the cul-de-sac?
Pardon?
Are you saying that you expect the county or the city to build the cul-de-sac for you?
No, I'm willing to pay 100%.
You don't have to surrender it to the county then, you can just build it, it's your land.
Got to build to their standards.
All right, but then it becomes a property of the city or the county, but I don't want to give the city or county nine acres.
You're not going to.
Nobody's asking you to.
No.
All right, so I can start building a cul-de-sac, as long as I'm...
No, no. You can't build a thing until we say you can and they give, they stamp it as approved. You got, you got to start here.
Okay.
Get, one of these guys over here can tell you who is a reputable that will work with, draw it up. They work on them all the time.
We can't do that, but we will work with you.
You can say names, you know who they are.
This is going on 30, well, with me, six or eight years. That's ridiculous.
What about that gentleman right back there?
You just need to, you need to guide him to where he needs to go.
Mr. Hicks, I mean, you're representing him, aren't you? Are you representing him?
I think we need to get outside here and discuss...
Who are you representing?
Mr. Tidmore, we've never met before tonight, though.
Well, that's obvious.
Bobby Herndon has been dealing with him, Bobby's out, so...
Oh, boy. Ending on a doozy.
Y'all need a formal introduction or...
Yeah.
Need an executive session?
Mr. Tidmore, me and Mr. Hicks.
I'm just trying to improve the neighborhood, get Phase Four completed, that's the last phase.
I think y'all have the same goal in mind.
I think y'all need to...
If they're gracious enough to approve this tonight, we'll have the cul-de-sac designed, approved by them, then you can get to work.
So I can, after all that, I can build a cul-de-sac?
Maybe.
Now...
Maybe, if they approve it.
If y'all approve it. Now, as a rebuttal...
This is your property.
You might want to put it by your head.
Yeah, we understand what you're saying.
The covenants for this neighborhood have not been updated since 2019, but I have heard, listened patiently with other people that are opposing it. The square footage for this neighborhood is not over 3,000. It was originally designed, and I know it's, oh, 2,400 square feet, something like that, I'll have to read the covenants, but the covenants have been recorded, so they're there. And they're comparing it to Cherokee Shores. This is not Cherokee Shore subdivision, this is Lake Cove Estates. And we shouldn't have to compete with a covenant for Lake Cove Estates. As far as I know, all the utilities are already set up within 100 feet of what we're trying to get done. And I'm trying to be patient with these numbers.
You're in the county out there.
I'm willing to do anything I have to to get it done, but they got to learn to cooperate.
Make sure he understands what all these guys do.
I will, I will.
All right. We've, we've approved this before and nothing's changed. Hopefully, everything's gotten better for those residents in the area. I'm going to leave with that, so. Any comments or questions from commission? All right. Commission, before we have S. 4324, Lake Cove Estates number four, which is a reapproval of 2019, two variance requests, cap, so half-street improvements, engineering has issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion, second.
Who do I need to pick on here? Dooley?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, and just a friendly reminder, we will see you all back here in just two days to go over, except for Mr. Harrison, to go over the Alberta and McFarland corridor areas on the zoning map. So as always, please go to framework.tuscaloosa.com for all of you listening at home and review the text, review the map, and tell us what you think. Thanks.
Okey-dokey.